Mark? Would you be kind enough to say the Pledge of Allegiance today?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still, are you okay? All right, we're calling the meeting to order, but before we start, I would like to thank everyone and welcome you to the January 12th, 2021 Board of Education meeting for Beattman Town Central School District. So we're calling to order. And Joanne, may I please have a roll call? Douglas Beebe?
I'm here.
Kathy Buckley?
Here.
Michael Hagadorn?
Here.
Ed Maron?
Here.
Christopher Micho? Crystal Palmer?
Here.
Nicole Puporn?
Here.
Mark San?
Here.
Holly and Stone? Alexis Hawk? Okay. May it be resolved that the Board of Education, may it be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda, may I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Nicole.
Okay, I've got Nicole's motion, may I have a second?
A second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May it be resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons and proposed pending or current litigation. Is there anything else that I need to add to our executive session to cover all our topics? Okay, seeing that there are none, may I have a motion, please?
Hold on one second, sorry, I'm trying to mute. My computer's very glitchy today, you'll probably figure that out over the course of the meeting. Why don't we also bring up the pending litigation? Oh, sorry.
That's okay. All right, um, could I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike, may I have a second?
A second, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. We will be going into executive session. Are you sending out a specific invite for us to leave and come back to?
Yes, so please make sure that you leave this meeting, X out of it. I'll send you an email with an invite to the executive session that you can use, which you used for this meeting after we exit of executive session. So I'll see everybody in a little bit.
All right, excellent, thank you. Thank you, Ed, may I have a second, please?
Crystal, second.
Thank you, Crystal. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. Next, we have presentations. Our first topic is the ELA Program. Our presenters are Principal Sarah Paket and Principal Darcy Stoutenjer.
Hello, everyone. I'm having a little bit of a laggy computer tonight, so I'm hoping I'll be able to get through. Darcy, do you want to present from your computer? Mine has not been cooperating very well since I've logged on.
Sarah, that could be a Google thing, because mine has been that way all afternoon, so.
Okay.
Yeah, our classes today were a little bit rough.
So while she's pulling that up, we would just like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you a little bit about the Wonders program and let you know kind of how things have been going and what our next steps are going forward. This presentation is going to kind of walk you through Wonders program and give you a little bit of insight into the reason why we chose it and what are some of the benefits that we're seeing from the programming. This is a McGraw-Hill publication, and it was adopted in September of 2020. We do have the 2020 edition of the Wonders program, which actually received good reviews that Principal Stoutenjer is going to talk about in just a few slides. Are you able to present? There we go. So I'll just let that load, and actually, if you want to go to slide three, Darcy, when it comes up. So just to start talking about, you know, what is Wonders? This is our comprehensive K to five literacy program, and we have actually rolled it out in both buildings, K through five. And it has a wealth of research-based print and digital resources that help to support strong literacy foundational skills. Throughout this program, our students have access to complex fiction and nonfiction texts, and it also helps to develop strong writing skills through daily writing practice. And that was something that was a key feature that we were looking for as we were looking into new programs. So we're going to kind of go in and give you a little bit of a preview of what we work with each day with our students. Darcy, you're still on mute.
Stop it. Okay. Am I all set? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so why was, why was Wonders chosen at Beattman Town? As you're aware, the committee members worked together from early January through May of last year to develop a recommendation to the board for the new series. A few key factors played a role in the decision. The committee liked the ease of use of Wonders, of the Wonders program, as they were already familiar with implementing a core program model such as this. It's set up similar to Journeys, and the program seemed to be closely aligned with the standards as well. And as compared to other programs, it seemed more relevant and appealing to students. There are also some other factors that I will continue to discuss in the next slide. On the screen, you'll see the list of our committee members representing our grade levels and includes our special education teachers as well. So Ed Reports, whenever a school is looking for a new curriculum, Ed Reports is the gold standard and resources to check when you're shopping. So it's an independent nonprofit that's designed to prove K through 12 instruction, and the Ed Reports reviews are generated from a panel of experts that include principals, teachers, and educational researchers. The materials met the expectations in all areas, including instruction and practice to develop skills and understanding, along with the expectations of alignment. So there was also many high-quality texts and tests that support students' development of literacy skills. So in a nutshell, we say it received all green reviews on Ed Reports, which not a lot of series do. And this next slide, it shows another key component that drew our attention to Wonders. It was student access to digital tools. It's, it is quite extensive. The entire K through six collection of Wonders leveled readers is available in ebook formats, has integrated audio support, so students can hear the stories being read to them. There's highlighting, so students can have help tracking, and there's also note-taking features. Teachers can assign curriculum individually in their Google classrooms to students. There's a digital gaming piece. Students are actively playing and having fun while working on skill-based assessments. That game where it says, "Student Gaming Example", students can slide those red chips into the boxes, and that helps them segment phonemes and just builds their basic literacy skills. And they can also hear that word read to them properly. We have weekly and unit-based assessment, which is delivered digitally through the online platform. Teachers can modify the question selections through the online dashboard to better suit the needs of the reader, of the students, so that's a great example of differentiation. And the other picture on the screen, where it says, "Digital Shared Read Example", that's the Read and Write Companion that provides daily reading and writing practice, where students are taught to think critically about their reading and to respond to literature daily in writing. So on that particular slide, it's actually a picture of a Google Meet. A teacher was presenting the writing companion to her students that were home, learning digitally. And students do have the hard copy, but it's always nice to see the same thing on their screen during a Google Meet.
So one key component to strong instruction is the ability to differentiate. And the great thing about the Wonders program is that it provides instruction and direction on how to differentiate for the teachers. Differentiation happens across the curriculum in various forms, so I'm going to kind of cover with you and let you see a few ways that Wonders will provide that differentiation. On this slide, we took an image for you of actually the teacher access that they have on the digital component on their dashboard. And this is showing you an example of how the students and teachers have access to multiple levels of text that are both on, above, and below for the various readers. The guide that teachers have provides them with scripts and prompts that they can use for lessons that are either going to be used to remediate with students or can actually accelerate students. So the access to these multiple levels of text is really important, not only our teachers, but our students as well. The readers can be used during small group instruction or possibly for an intervention or an extension piece. Another form of differentiation that we have access to through Wonders is differentiated spelling lists. And this is really important and helps our lower-level students and gives them the opportunity to be successful and grow. And it allows them to start where they are and have success and be able to be given more challenges as they develop their skills. Next slide. One of my favorite components to the Wonders program is definitely the data dashboard, and that's something that I'm really looking forward to diving in more deeply with my teachers in the months ahead. The Wonders component online, we have, as Darcy mentioned earlier, the ability to customize assessments and pick and choose which question types we would like to assign to students. And the dashboard really is an opportunity for teachers to be able to go from insight to action with a single click using data from assessments and even the online activities, like the gaming pieces that Principal Stoutenjer was talking about. And it gives an instant snapshot of those results. And from those results, there are five different reports, which can be used to take a deep dive into that student information to be able to get a better picture of the student learning that's going on, and even to help teachers develop groups based upon that assessment data. And as administrators, Principal Stoutenjer and I are able to take a look at all of that data from a building-level access point and drill down into classrooms, as well as write down into student reports and information, which is really beneficial for us as we're trying to help guide our instructional pieces with our teachers. So that's something I'm really looking forward to, taking a great deal of time in the next several months to work more closely with our teachers on that. Next slide. The daily writing practice that I discussed in the beginning really helps to keep students engaged in written response, in response to their literature. The picture on the top, where it says Earth, this is an example of the Reading Writing Companion, and it shows you what the students have right within their reading, writing books that they're using. On the bottom, you see an image of the Online Writer's Notebook. And the feature of this that I like the most is that it really gives constant daily practice for our students with their writing in a format that is going to be more and more utilized as we prepare and get back towards the state exams that are going to be computer-based. So in grades two through five, the Writer's Notebook takes students through every step of the writing process, from planning to publication. And starting as early as kindergarten in the Reading Writing Companion, students are responding to the literature that they're reading. And students can use the online notebook for the 12 extended writing tasks that they complete throughout the school year. And the text-editing tools are present, and they're a familiar interface for the formatting and writing in that digital space. And again, that's a great practice for them to get ready for that online platform that they're going to experience in future state assessments. And there are embedded resources that provide additional support to the students. They can submit their work online or print a copy, and teachers can even provide comments and feedback in that same online space. So it's a very efficient way of working with students in regards to their writing practice on a daily basis, and it allows for that real-time response from teachers.
So the rollout of Wonders at Beattman Town, what were our steps? We had six days of training for teachers in August of 2020. There were over 50 participants between Beattman Town and Cumberland Head who participated in the summer training. All summer participants completed the Wonders Quick Start Course, as well as the Wonders Digital Overview Course. Both were very informative, and it was great because they are self-paced courses, and we do have, still have access to that, so we can continue to train new teachers. These two courses served as a foundation for our teachers when they were unpacking and preparing for the year ahead. We took part in a curriculum mapping project following the Heidi Hayes Jacobs Framework. She is the guru in curriculum mapping. And our grade levels worked together for three days and developed their maps, which outlined each unit and broke the series down into the various components. These are living documents that the teachers are going to add to throughout the course, and I'll speak more of that in the upcoming slide. Sarah, do you want me to show this example of a curriculum map?
Sure.
Okay. I don't know if it would take up a little bit. Still loading, it's a little slow here at my house. Oh, there it is. Can you see that?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Are you going to need to, did it open in a separate?
Yeah, hold on one second.
You're going to need to transfer to the other tabs.
Yep.
There you go, now we see it.
Okay, so this is the example of a third-grade curriculum map. You see my cursor? It's drawn out by units and then weeks, and then it shows the essential question for the week and the weekly concepts. And teachers, this is all teacher-created. They plugged in the standards that matched the components in every, in every area. I'll try and move it around a little bit more. So, very detailed, very involved, and teachers are continuing to add to this resource. It's a roadmap of their instruction coming up through the year. And this particular map goes all the way to Unit Six. They were able to complete quite a bit over the summer. So let me go back and present the other screen. Give me one second to switch over.
This is, this is the digital teacher's worst nightmare right here.
Yeah. All right. All right, can you see my next slide where it says, "Teacher Findings"?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, now it's coming through.
Okay. So Sarah and I, Principal Paket and I have been talking to teachers and gathering their feedback, and we took note of how things are going so far, and here are some of the findings. There's a strong digital component. With virtual instruction, teachers are able to instruct with Wonders, and students have access to the online platform. They're really utilizing the gaming-type features and the online assessment components and the leveled readers. We're finding that the unit test language mirrors the New York State exams, which helps prepare students for the type of assessments they're going to experience when state tests are back up and running. The literature has been of interest to students. I observed a fourth-grade classroom reading a story about bullying and not being a bystander, so that was very relevant to them, it was, they had a nice discussion. And the professional development resources, they include course guides, coaching, and classroom videos, so teachers can watch Wonders being implemented in actual classrooms. And those are all available on demand, 24 hours. And we are finding that Wonders is aligned to the New York State standards. And as I just showed you, time was spent in August cross-referencing the curriculum to the standards, looking for gaps. And the program does allow teachers to set up their online digital plan book, and that allows them to filter out the extra material or the material that isn't as important and gives them a core pathway to follow. There's so much in the program that that guidance piece is really helpful. And students have a weekly story with specific concepts and skills, and the direction for the week is focused. And students have a chance to engage deeply with the reading passages, because they do read and reread the passages for different purposes. And we already talked about the differentiated spelling lists. And those have proven to be very helpful in reaching our lower-level readers while giving some extension to the higher-level readers. And many staff have reported that the amount of resources is overwhelming in Wonders. And I guess that could be seen as a good problem to have, because we certainly didn't want to buy into a program that didn't have enough resources to it. So the toolbox which teachers can pull from to instruct our students is vast, and it does offer many opportunities. Our role over the next year will be, continue to work with the teachers to kind of weed out the must-dos and the can-dos and develop better understanding of the parts and pieces to the series. And there was some troubleshooting that had to be done. As with anything new, there's been a few hiccups with learning all of the tricks to the digital pieces. For example, there was an instance in which a teacher could not find the written feedback provided on their student work. It just wasn't saving correctly. So luckily, there was colleagues to lean on, and Wonders has a customer service number that we can always call, and they've been very helpful. Our next steps, we do have opportunity. We have two more training sessions available from Wonders Implementation Specialists, so we look forward to scheduling that in the future. And we're going to continue with the curriculum mapping that was started in August. Teachers are still engaging and recording their instruction on the maps, because they are living documents. They serve as a guide for our current teachers, as well as future teachers that may join the team. And they just outline how educators plan, what subject content students will learn over the course of the year. Many times, this is a four- and six-year project, building off content from one year to the next. And lastly, we want to increase our understanding and really take a deep dive into the data dashboard. So we have already spoken about that. We're really looking forward to using that and seeing how it can better suit our teachers and our students' needs.
At this point, does anybody have any questions for us regarding the Wonders program? Okay. Well, thanks for letting us visit you regarding the program.
Thanks very much.
I do, one question, and thanks for the presentation. And it had to do with, I wasn't really clear, because it looked like it had a tremendous amount of function to it. For, is this something we can adapt for more recovery of students that need extra help? I mean, I know it has a lot of different options on the curriculum and support, all that. How does that work with the RTI, and how does it get integrated?
So, in, in the program, there are different levels. There's below-leveled readers, on-level, and above-level, approaching-level readers. And teachers have the ability to assign leveled readers. Say, if you are a second-grade teacher, you can still assign leveled readers that maybe would be normally part of a first-grade classroom. So teachers are using that during their win time, which is what I need, so. So they would kind of use that to supplement and to review and to fill in those lagging skills with the RTI students. Sarah, do you want to add anything?
And also, that data dashboard is going to be very useful for this purpose. The different reports that are available there will be able to actually pinpoint and show which specific skills students are struggling with and be able to give support to teachers as far as grouping the students and which students would benefit from getting extra support or more information on, you know, this one component of reading and really be able to help dissect the data that we're able to get from using this online component with the wonders program.
That's great, thanks so much.
Are there any more questions for Ms. Pocat and Ms. Stravenger? Alright, thank you so much for your presentation, ladies. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Our next present, presentation is Superintendent Daniel Mannix and Board, I'm sorry, School Business Manager Jennifer Parliament. They will be doing a presentation on their budget.
So thank you, as I mentioned, that glitchiness is happening, happening to me as well. But just give me a moment. So Jen and I are going to talk about our tax levy limit and our multi-year plan and then some of the other numbers that are trickling in now to help us build a budget. Jen, as I'm trying to put the presentation up, you were going to talk about revenue. I want you to start with that and then it'll pop up and if we need to go back.
Yeah, so we're going to talk about the multi-year budget forecast first. And on top of that is our revenues. There is only one number that I have changed on the revenue side so far. The shared services and other is still 1.2 million. As numbers become more firm throughout time, but that will probably change and it could go down versus up. But that's the early number that we're looking at pilots. Is, I carried over the number from last year, but trying to get ahold of the county to get updated numbers. I know they're kind of out straight, they're very, they've got a very small staff on right now. So I'll keep getting, trying to get those pilot numbers to verify my numbers. State aid, we're remaining flat, we still, we have a 0% increase right now. We're waiting, I think Mr. Mannix was saying that we might get some, a preliminary run from the governor sooner rather than later, we'll see, but for now we're going with zero, 0% increase. Um, the not, one number that did change is the tax levy. Because I have a preliminary tax levy limit calculation. So that is at 22, 567, 610. And that's based on a tax levy increase of 3.22%.
Jen, is it on the board now?
It is, yep. Yeah. So if you could see the tax levy there, that, that is the number that changed. So it's based on a 3.22% tax levy limit at the moment. I have updated as many figures as I could, I will present that slide after the tax levy limit calculation that we have as of today. But as you all well know, that number changes at minimum at least another four times because numbers change throughout the budget season. So that's where we are at for revenue and as you can see, the revenues have changed also with the expenditures, but our bottom line is at a negative 412,000 versus the last time when we presented it was at 774,000, I believe, so. And then the appropriated reserves and fund balance, Mr. Mannix is going to discuss.
Yeah, so the appropriated reserves is something we started maybe four years ago or so. And that is make money out of like the EBLR reserves and other reserves to pay for loan costs that are going to happen with retirements and whatnot. And sometimes you pay more in the 150, but then the subsequent year we may pay less. We find that that number helps balance out what we have in reserves. I think it also complies with our reserve policy, which we, we're noted for by the controllers dealing with a few schools that has a reserve policy. Additionally, last year, was the first year we've ever allocated in a number of years, maybe ever 1.6 million dollars in fund balance to offset the dramatic reductions that we had from the state and also the anticipated reductions that Governor Cuomo said he was going to implement. And he said it again last night, he just keeps pushing the date back. And we're looking to realize that same number this year as well. So our fund balance, our fund balance, we are appropriating more. And we feel that that's a good measure of using those taxpayer dollars to offset the budget. But we need to be very, very careful because if you put too much down there, you get upside down really, really fast. And then the districts that do that, or even if the governmental agencies really find themselves in a hole. One particular group was the health insurance group, they messed around with our fund balance and, and used too much of it. And then when something bad hits, you just, it's just devastating. So the 1.6 is the measured number, is a high number for us, not too high. So that's where we are coming into the budget cycle for revenues. Why don't I kick it back over to Jen for the expenditures, some of the expenditures part of the budget?
Yeah, so expenditures, the salary and retirement mandates, I haven't gotten any further notifications. So that number did not change from last time. TRS were putting at 10%, that's the high end of their estimate. ERS, we don't have an estimate that has come in yet, but I based it on another, how much TRS increased, which is about a 0.4, 0.5% increase. So I increased ERS by that same percentage. I'm in the ballpark, but until that estimate comes in, I, I, I don't have anything to update there. The curriculum project, so it's going down by 100,000 as the principals just discussed the reading series. We had, that was money in there for the reading series last year and it's now not in this year. So that is the reduction of the $100,000 there.
Thanks, you notice in 2020, 2021, there was a million dollar reduction there and that was because of the reductions in, in staff. So that was significant. As you see, we are not currently anticipating the need for reductions in staff, but it depends all on how the governor treats the state budget deficit. Again, last night he said, if the federal government doesn't come in in April, I will cut school funding to 20%, which I don't know how schools would be able to survive. So one of the pieces of good news financially is our health insurance. We did finally right size and made some very, very significant moves with our health insurance program. And it's paid massive dividends. So we are no longer looking at 20% increases in health insurance. We're hoping for a 4% increase in health insurance or maybe even less. So that helps two areas, it helps that health insurance number and it also helps that BOSI's admin increase, which they normally say it's all because of the health insurance increase. So we'll hold them to that this year with the help of Mr. Mayor and myself and my colleagues. If it's a low increase in health insurance, that BOSI's admin should be a low increase as well. And then the Savvy Tech increases, we have no idea, that's part of the budget process. They do always point to high health insurance as a reason for the increases. We have a significant increase in there for this particular year. But again, that's a, that's currently an unknown number, but that number does come in as BOSI does their budget before we do our budget. And Jen, why don't, actually I'll stick with the cap bus, and I'll hand over for you on the debt service. There's a negative, I'm going to call it a reduction for the capital bus purchases. And that is we're, we've been for a number of years, well, I'll go, I'll go in the wayback machine here. We had a, a study maybe seven years ago conducted and that study said we needed at that point in time, based on our enrollment, to purchase three buses one year, four buses in, three buses one year, four buses the next. ELT came along, we find that, we found ourselves traveling a lot more with field trips and, and whatnot, we found ourselves needing to get a fourth bus. Then our enrollment started to increase and we needed another bus. We needed, never needed to go to five, but it validated, continued to validate that fourth bus. This particular year, we are looking to go with three buses because our mileage on our buses is not what it's been because of the shutdown from March and the, just the on off shutdown, lack of field trips, lack of scoring event between March and now. That's a reduction, it's a good, it's 100,000, or 100,000 dollar reduction because we're not, we're only going to purchase three buses, go out in the public for three buses. And also last year, one of those buses was a handicap bus and that bus has come off as well. So we have in the bet, we have in the, in the margin under assumptions, we placed four buses, but thought will be actually three buses. And Jen, why don't you take over the debt service?
Yeah, debt service is going to have very little change because we have no ban or bond coming on or off. So that's just principal and interest, a, a regular principal interest schedule. So no big changes there.
So lastly, if you just look at our total expenditures, that bottom line or seconds in the last line, we've been hovering around 44, 45 million dollars over budget for now, moving to our third. Or even if you go back another year prior, that line has been pretty flat, so our budget has been pretty stable. And while we do look at that number for 112,000 in the red and we want to be in the black, at this point in the budget process, that's a relatively favorable number. And a 45 million dollar budget, that's 1%. And if I said to everybody, go ahead and create a budget for your house for next year that you start in June and that budget will move you all the way through the whole year and will include everything. And you found that you were 1% off to the direction, you'd probably get an award. So it's, it's tight budgeting and we feel good right now about where we are. But there could be good news or bad news coming, which is out of our control, but we'll document it and plug it in. So if that, at this point, there are questions about our forecast for 2021 or past year or two years.
Dan and Jen, I have a question. You made me think about when you started talking about the buses and limited usage, well, I was looking at savings on fuel, oil and diesel, I imagine that. I don't see anything in those lines and I imagine that would be significant for this year as well.
There's no save, I mean, we've only been out of school a week. So fuel, fuel, oil, it's hard to predict, we just started winter. I, I'm anticipating we will have some savings in fuel, oil, but it's nothing that's, that I can predict is going to happen for future years. Because I hope this pandemic goes away at some point. So I, I anticipate fuel, oil and diesel to remain consistent. Maybe not for this year, they may, we may have some savings there this year, may, like I said, it's only January 12th. But I can't count on that savings next year because I'm hoping as long as, that this pandemic goes away and things will return to normal. Does that make sense?
Sure, sure. I was also thinking of, you know, the shutdown earlier in the year in September or even last year in, in March. But maybe, you know, looking, looking at the 1920, I didn't know if that was something we just absorbed, you know, or, or benefited from without putting it in a line. So I guess this is more of a forecasting tool than a, than what we actually used.
So we did go through, in the exercise, we had to reduce about 4 million dollars. We did go through every line and, and, and make them pretty tight, Mike. That doesn't help in this more global model. And I, I would actually anticipate the opposite in 2021. We've been, we've been very fortunate to have very low cost in America over this past, maybe two years. And you're already seeing at the pump, the number trickle up. And I would think that there may be the need for greater revenues or a different administration taking over a tax on, on gas, fuel, oil. So I don't know that we're going to receive that benefit, but Mike, that is something, we have a line, we look at that line and if it's a significant line, we would put a reduct in there. We haven't looked at every, every line
Sure.
Yet this year on, for everything, that is an exercise we do.
Now, now, since I was involved in the ELT and our capital project, the changes we made there, I guess, actually kind of go back beyond this, this board, right? So it's already in there, I imagine.
Correct.
Yeah. Looking at propane and all the changes we made in our heating systems.
The budget from several years ago has, for fuel, oil and, and propane and all that, has gone down significantly. But yeah, that was already recognized several years ago. I think it was 18, 19 when the first reduction, big reduction was there.
Yeah, Mary and Eric definitely did put that in, that in, Mike.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions about the forecast? Any question about the, where we are with the tax levy limit right now, 3.22? One of the reasons for that, as I mentioned to the board previously, was our growth factor, which is one of the numbers that gets plugged into the tax cap calculation, is very large. We're one of the few districts in northern New York above Albany that's growing. And we've had a lot of growth within our school district with homes being well and businesses moving in. So we've had an unprecedented growth, growth factor, which drives that number a, a little higher than what we've seen, not dramatically higher, 3.22.
Yeah, and there's still several numbers for our tax levy limit that are pending. So once those numbers become available, I'll continue to update that tax levy limit.
Just, I guess so everybody understands that number and we try to mention that every year at this point, so it may sound like a broken record. That's the number that Governor Cuomo says that, you know, you really should go out at. That is the number that is, that they determine is sustainable. Anything over that, they say you're going to need a super majority. Anything, if you go under that, there's no way to recoup that money later on. Recoup that and you lose that, it kind of compounds just as, as a function of numbers. So we do try to get pretty tight with that number. I know one year we, we did go under that number significantly. And you, you know, when you have hard times, you'll go back and you'll look and you say, if we would have had that money, we wouldn't be in this situation. So it's a number that can be hard to swallow, but it's built on what the government says we should go out at. We'll just, I'll leave it at that for now. And I guess that's about it, Jen.
Yep, that covers it.
Alright. Next, we're moving on to reports. Mr. Mannix, you are up first, do you have any additional reports that you would like to add?
Yeah, I have a few this, this week, I'll try to be brief. One on the agenda item is our Hall of Fame. And I'm really glad that the board adopted goals to establish a Hall of Fame and we wanted, we want to do it well. We've already established a committee that will help us build a framework for a successful Hall of Fame. So what's the examples, like what's the criteria, what's, where's the location, how do you select somebody? What's the process and all the, kind of the complicated nitty gritty components to the Hall of Fame? This committee will, will work on. And then from there, we probably get more to the announcements and the nominations of our first class of the Hall of Fame. And I'm anticipating the Hall of Fame being a two-pronged hall. One, a traditional Hall of Fame for athletics. But the other is for those people who have achieved remarkable distinction and success here at Beethamtown. And I think it would be great to showcase our kids that it is possible to walk the halls of Beethamtown and then leave and have remarkable achievement. And it could be just the, whether it's the kids, it could be staff, it could be former coaches. And it could be just the, whether it's the kids, it could be staff, it could be former coaches, who knows what, what it might be. That's why we have a nomination committee and process in place, but it's exciting to be able to showcase um, all the fine efforts we've had over the years with our Hall of Fame. The also on the board agenda today is the share, a shared service, um, that we're engaging in with Shay Zee. That's um, a student who had, I believe, had been going here. And uh, they moved to Shay Zee and our residency policy allows out of district students to um, be in our district if we engage in a shared service and it works for the both districts. And in this particular case, it's, it's working for everybody and we're going to recommend that the child stays here instead of going to particular, uh, maybe um, Champaign Valley Educational Services. We get some revenue uh, for that open, open space. Uh, so that's exciting to have a, a shared service, um, after such a dramatic um, budgetary year. Two more items to discuss, one is uh, extended learning time. Uh, about a month ago, as we talked about before, we uh, were notified surprisingly that uh, New York State uh, has the ability to fund extended learning time, which was shocking to me and I think a couple others who are on the email list because of the um, dramatic and atrocious state aid run we received. Um, not only the fact that COVID uh, makes it very difficult to run day to day school, much less run extended time school, my initial reaction was, besides that shock, was maybe we can't do this. And then I think that was on a Friday and then uh, gave us some thoughts, that's not my job. My job isn't to just take the easy way out or ignore something or think that something's too difficult to get done. And I went out and I started talking to some of the people who would be in on the decisions of, of potentially saying yes. And the remarkable, um, you know, the people we have here at Beaton Town, one of the reasons why we've been able to do so much, like have five years or six years of E L T, whatever it's been, is because of that can do spirit. And they um, said, you know what, this is not something we should just reject out of hand, we should look at it, there's a lot of good. That's been, that's been done with this and let's, let's take a look and give it a, give it a try. So now that's where we are, is we're in the determining phase if E L E, E L T is something that we can do and who would do it? And that's not a function of the board, that's a function of discussions with um, teachers prior. Um, years ago, the first year, we reached out to like nonprofits and other entities to see if they could come in because that's the way the grant was written. And there just wasn't enough people in Plattsburgh to help Beaton Town. Unlike Syracuse or Yonkers or big cities where they have these nonprofits that can flood a district and really help uh, with the learning, we don't necessarily have that, that resource. But oh, so B T A stepped up years ago and said, we'll be that total resource and it's not the way the grant was written at all. And it's worked and, but now we're having that discussion, is that something that the, does the B T A want to say? Um, yes, this is, this, this is doable halfway through the year. It is, um, the governor, it, it should be noted that the governor did say that they'll take off twenty percent of the amount. Um, so at least that's consistent. And we are again looking, we had a great discussion tonight. Um, uh, people made me aware of their feelings, made me aware of the possibilities. Um, add clarity to my understanding on things that I wouldn't have otherwise known. And we're in the process of finalizing a document to give to the teachers for their consideration. If they want to do it and if they say yes, then that's, this year would be a consideration for the board who represents the, the community, that yes, we can do E L T and it will look like this. Is that something that you folks think we should, we should do? So that could happen, we'd like to have that happen um, if, before February, if it's going to happen because February first is right about the mid-year point, um, it's almost right smack dab in the mid-year point. Um, and that makes sense to do it right at the end of the semester for high school, middle school. And it's, it just is a logical place for a lot of different reasons. But I don't want to give anybody false hopes, if, these are difficult decisions. This is a diff- difficult grant to implement when there's no COVID, when um, we're not under a budget constraints. And it's, that's, that's kind of an oxymoron or a counterintuitive to hear that this is giving, giving the district two point four million dollars when you're in a budget constraints makes things difficult, but there's, there's, we don't get to just spend the two point four million dollars anyway, we want to spend it, so it's, it's very difficult, it's difficult to make a big change in the middle of the year. Uh, I gotta give everybody credit for their honesty, I gotta give everybody credit for their willingness to engage. And you should be very proud that we aren't just rejecting something that's very difficult, um, because that would be the easiest thing to do. So I don't know, are there any questions? Uh, let me come back to E L T or any questions on any items. Lastly, our reopening committee met again. And I, much of you are on that committee, I think it was Friday. And it was more good conversation, we modified some of the language uh, based on a recommendation from a teacher and one of our committee members who serves on the board, but also is in the medical field, um, I think our admin team feels good about it. And we've implemented that already. And uh, we, everybody is in a, that committee is aware of the dramatic increase we've seen in COVID cases. Uh, obviously, we've been closed for a while, we didn't have these cases while we were in session, but once, it was like immediately once we shut down, they started just flooding in. And right now we have, um, we have a significant number of cases that puts us in the out to further notice or out for fourteen days on our um, quadrant. And there's nobody, nobody on the committee thought that we should, uh, at this point, adjust that page four quadrant of our reopening plan. So I give you four items there, uh, E L T, reopening plan, uh, shared service and Hall of Fame. Are there any questions on any of those items? I'm gonna get off easy here.
Wait, no, it's Crystal, I have, I guess, a comment or a question. So there has been some concern about E L T grant, um, how it would be implemented from Beaton Town Elementary parents. So if I'm hearing you correctly, at this point, it's still querying the teachers if they're interested. And then going forward, will there be um, some engagement with the, our community members, our, our parents and family members about, about, about that?
So knowing whether we, so knowing what to worry about would be the, the first um, good conversation. So we don't know right now what that implementation would look like because we don't know if there even have a willing participant. So we have had preliminary discussions on what it could look like. And we've also had, part of those discussions are, um, this may not, this may not be doable. There's a lot, there's a lot of sentiment that this may not be doable. So there's, at this point, there's no um, point going to the uh, the community to say, you know, we've been offered two point four million dollars, uh, we can't do this, but how would you feel even if we could? Um, the, the community, this is a difficult part for the Board of Education, we've had this discussion before. When we first were provided the grant, um, I do remember going out and having fifteen or so community meetings and letting the community know what E L T is, why we're going to do that. There was not unanimous consent that we should have E L T. Um, the board did vote unanimously to uh, accept E L T. I would, we've had the conversation with the board before that and I don't know how you feel about this. That, you know, the, the community does vote you in to be their, their voice. You have nine, we have nine members voted in by the community, you are the legislative body. Um, adopt, you know, appointed by the, the, the community. Is that enough or should there be, you know, should there be more conversation? Um, get the community feel before we get your feel or do you want to have the um, awareness and make the decision on behalf of the community? So I've done it either way.
Right, yeah, no, I guess um, Mike questioning about that is I, I, I think as a, a district and an administrative team, everyone has been very good about transparency with, with coronavirus and everything that has the decision making behind that. Um, and I think our, our taxpayers have, you know, appreciate that and they're looking for that same level. Again, we're getting a little bit, the, the, what's the saying, the horse in front of the cart, we don't know if E L T is coming in, but I think if there, if E L T does feel doable by the B T A, I, I think our taxpayers and our parents would like to have, even if it's the Google forums or the queries or um, some input.
What's in that discussion? How does the rest of the board, what do, what are we looking for here?
Um, I'll add to what she has, what um, Crystal was just mentioning. I think um, community input is um, pretty important, but I also think we are in a really tight timeline. So um, I don't know if community import, input, sorry, input in the form of um, a survey of our community, maybe with a, with an option of comment might be a good idea, I'm not necessarily sure, but I do know if our staff feels that um, they have the ability um, to implement the program and we can utilize the money in the way in which it's intended. We're under a really tight timeline, so I think our community input is obviously very, very important. But I, I think how we go about it needs to be um, relatively quick and concise. That's it.
I also think we um, probably don't, we do want to visit the objective, you know, it's and is the objective being met through this pandemic situation? Um, you know, what, what may have worked before under normal circumstances is, uh, is it working now? Can it work or do we have to modify the approach? The, the, the whole idea of the E L T was to give some enrichment to students and that had, has had some great success in some areas. Um, particularly when there was bringing in new, new components to kids didn't have before. Now with this whole pandemic, things are different, are we still meeting the same objective? Is that positive or do we have to modify?
The other, the other question I would have would be, um, if, let's say our staff does believe that um, they have a program that they can implement that is effective. Um, what, what are the consequences of us saying yes? But, but more of what's the consequences of us saying no? If we pass on it this year, does that mean down the road, we lose the opportunity for it? Like, what are the consequences of our choices in the big picture in the future? Does anyone else have any questions um, concerning E L T or comments um, for Mr. Mannix at this time? I, I think they're done.
So why don't we see what happens? Why don't we see what our options are? Um, we do have that transparency, we've talked about E L T a couple times now, we were notified a month ago about it. Um, and there's a lot of things that have to happen before we really, you know, go out and say, hey, here's something viable to discuss. It's unfortunate that actually some people were made aware of something that's really half baked right now and maybe um, fan the flames of something that, that doesn't even need that um, happen right now because it's not vetted out and uh, you know, somebody may be making a determination, a mental determination of something that they would still not like once it's all, you know, thought through. Or they may right now be thinking, there's no way I'd ever vote for this and they're saying this on Facebook and they're saying this to board members. And then you find out that it's really a wonderful, you know, implementation, it's changed and it is better than it's been in a couple of years or whatever it may be. And they may have boxed themselves into a corner where they could have supported it before, so we're working on it. It was a long, good conversation today, uh, we're going to have more conversations on Friday. Um, I think we have to have a determination within a week from the B T A. And I don't know if the B T A turns it down, the ability, I don't know if we'll have the ability to go to other um, resources and, and say, can you do this for our kids? Can you give our, our kids this learning opportunity during this time of COVID? Right? And that's, you know, and then the board will say, I like this or I don't like this, or they may say, I'm not you may, you may hear this and be like, of course, we're going to approve this. Um, you may hear this and be like, I would really like more community feedback. But you're right, Kathy, the time is, is tight and you're right, Crystal, our, our community does like transparency, they're going to get it. It's just things got to happen before and I think you're right about the cart before the horse. Um, we've got to work things out internally before we start bringing things, the total picture out, but we are talking about it. Um, right now, obviously, we'll, we'll continue to talk, talk about it. Um, you know, certainly before, well, we'll either get a, um, something before our next February meeting or at our next February meeting, the die will be cast, the way I look at it. That's all I have for presentations, I'm not sure if there's anything else.
Oh, Kathy, you're muted.
Are we all set? Okay. All right, Jennifer, is there anything else that you would, as business manager, that you would like to add to um, our reports?
Uh, just wanted to give the board an update on the solar farm contract that we discussed last board meeting. Um, it has not been completed yet, so um, expect that on the February agenda, it should um, be done within the next couple of days. So we'll pass that along as soon as we get it.
Great. All right, moving on to ex officio student board member Alexis Hawks.
All right, so we'll start with the high school like normal, oh. Mr. Raise his hand.
Um, if I may ask Jen a question about the solar farm, is that um, is that a um, pilot that we're talking about or what was that the?
No, that is, um, a solar farm is coming in, into town and we are actually going to benefit on our electrical costs. We talked about it at last board meeting, I don't know if you remember, um, they take about ten percent of our elec, we can save approximately ten percent of our electrical costs. Um, but it's a contract that, the first contract they had written, we did not agree with, there was a lot of different sneaky clauses in there that you couldn't get out of. So they're redoing the contract for us, so um, instead of a twenty five year contract, it's going to be a seven year contract that we can save ten percent on our electricity.
Okay, thank you, I, I remember hearing about it, it's just a little, I'll blame it on COVID too.
All right, we'll try this again. Um, our next presenter, presenter for reports is ex officio student board member Alexis Hawks.
All right, so as I was saying, we'll start with the high school. The high school has had one hundred and one students on high honor roll with distinction, which is a ninety five or above. A hundred and thirty one students on high honor roll, ninety to ninety four and one hundred students on honor roll, which is an eighty five to ninety for the first marking period. Teachers and students have worked extremely hard in their quest to create a highly safe and high quality educational experience each and every day at Beaton Town High School. Our students are doing a phenomenal job following the safety guidelines throughout the day when on campus and have made a great effort as they transitioned to remote instruction last week. Some wonderful aspects that have happened since our last update are forty nine students participated in the P S A T. This is a wonderful experience for our underclassmen to encounter and prepare them for the real deal in the incoming years. Thirty four students participated in our second in-school S A T of the school year. This is extremely important to our juniors and seniors as they apply and progress through the college acceptance process. We are extremely proud of the dedication and work ethics of these. proud of the dedication and work ethics of these students. The New York State Department of Education and the Board of Regents have canceled the January Regents Administration. What this means is that students are currently enrolled in a course and would earn a full credit prior to the end of the first semester, would receive an exemption from the Regents in that course and obtain that graduation requirement. Please check our Facebook page daily for the Beaventown High School Student Spotlight. Part of our PBIS, teachers can nominate that are demonstrating, teachers can nominate students that are demonstrating actions that set a positive example for their peers. It has been great to see the number of spotlights we are receiving. We have received 59 thus, shout-outs thus far. Since our last meeting, we have had nine virtual college tours for our students. Students are able to interact with admissions personnel from these campuses as well as receive a college tour. The following campus has been presented to our students: Albany College of Pharmacy, LeMone College, Johnson Wales College of St. Rose, Fredonia State University, Paul Smith College, SUNY Canton, SUNY Pottstown, and University of New Hampshire. Our partnership with College for Every Student has started this year and the high school is off to a great start with our fellows working with our ninth grade counselor, Mrs. Sapp, and our ninth grade English teachers on awareness around college readiness. They are discussing the college process and participating in college tours within these interactions with CFES, building the college culture early in their high school tenure. The end of the first semester is on January 29th. We want to thank our teachers, staff, students, and community members for their continued support and dedication to our students' safety and academic success. The middle school has been filled with a flurry of activity since our last October update. Eighth grade clarinetist Cameron Benware has been accepted into this year's New York State Band Directors Association, which is NISPDA. Middle School Honor Band, Cameron was selected out of several hundred student musicians in New York State. This is the highest band honor for a middle school instrumentalist. Cameron will have the opportunity to work with other top student musicians from across New York State, as well as a chance to learn from a renowned conductor. We are so pleased to have Cameron represent Beaventown at this event and we are incredibly proud of her accomplishments. Last week, the last week of October was Spirit Week in the middle school. We had high participation by both students and faculty, especially for Pink Out Day, which coincided with the Real Men Wear Pink fundraiser for Beaventown Community, raised $750 for breast cancer research. The World Kindness Week celebration took place in November. Each day had a theme and a kindness challenge. In December, there had, there was a Winter Wonderland Celebration. Merry Monday Morning was a student, staff, and faculty favorite. Before break, students enjoyed a visit from the Grinch, Max, and Cindy Lou to classrooms with a sleigh full of treats. This was entirely orchestrated by the middle school staff, Mr. Swell, Mr. Daphne, Mrs. Chris, and Mrs. Forkley. Our girls' modified soccer team raised $65 to support the Beaventown Volunteer Fire Department. BMS students wrote letters and cards to veterans for Veterans Day. These were distributed by Assemblyman D. Billy Jones' office. A veteran, Mr. Horneal, wrote a letter to the editor thanking Beaventown students for their thoughtfulness. In November, BMS students voted on the theme for the 2021 Yearbook: Making History Together. In December, BMS conducted their annual yearbook cover contest. Each entry had to relate to the theme. The cover contest winners are in first place, Abigail Egan, in second place, Colin Watson, and third place, Addison Jewell. BMS celebrated first quarter accomplishments and achievements with a prerecorded grade-level Eagle Pride Assembly. Teachers presented students with growth mindset awards and students who earned honor roll status for the first quarter were recognized. CFES mentoring program rolled out in November and continues to go on strong. We have 45 mentors that will be supporting our students. Additionally, BMS is partnering again this spring semester with the SUNY Plattsburgh School of Education and CFES Brilliant Pathways to offer an after-school virtual tour tutoring program called Birds of a Feather. Students will be able to receive content-specific tutoring by MST student. Parents will be able to request a tutoring session via Google Form. Tutoring will begin on February 1st. Our transition to remote learning is going well. Teachers and students have settled into a routine. The elementary, in, the Beaventown Elementary, in November, teachers at BES held parent-teacher conferences on Monday, November 23rd, and Tuesday, the 24th. They held 488 conferences between these two days, as well as 66 conferences prior to the 23rd and 24th. This equates to 91% of our parents and teachers meeting to discuss their child's educational progress. We held our school-wide spelling bee on December 9th. The winners of the bee go on to represent Beaventown at the regional spelling bee. Our fifth grade winner was Madeline Ventura and our runner-up was Samantha Welch. And our fourth grade winner was Victor Leroy Kenzer, with our runner-up being Isabella Segluzio. I'm so sorry if I said that wrong. I really tried. Congratulations and good luck to all of our spellers. Teachers and students alike have worked extremely hard to make our recent transition to virtual learning seamless. Parents and guardians have also been doing an outstanding job with supporting their BES students during this time. And it's been very exciting to join Google meets and see all of the learning and smiles that are happening as we work together each day. Students are learning, sharing, working hard, and continue to connect each day with their teachers, aides, and service providers. And last but not least, Cumberland Head. Traditionally, Cumberland Head students celebrated Eagle Pride Day and the Wall of Pride winners at a large gathering in the APR. Cumberland Head students, Eagle Pride Committee has found a way to celebrate our students and their accomplishments in a digital format this year. The Virtual Eagle Pride Assembly will take place monthly. Each teacher is adding their star student of the month to a slideshow. Included in the slideshow is a message from Principal Stouger, a top 20 reminder, and of course, our favorite Go Noodle music video to the students to dance along to. November's assembly was prerecorded, but for added fun, the committee decided to host a live event in December. All classes turned into the show via Google Meet at the same time to watch the show together. DJ Ashley Coller mic'd the event. Mr. Brandt's class earned the privilege of hosting the event while Mrs. Bishop ran the slideshow. At the end of the assembly, all cameras were turned on and the students could see other classrooms dancing to the same song. It was a nice way to celebrate our Wall of Pride winners and also help build community amongst the Cumberland Head students. In December, the school-wide spelling bee was held. Grades through three five turned in digitally to watch the class spelling bee winners compete for a chance to attend the regional spelling bee. This was one of our most intense spelling bee competitions in recent years. The bee lasted close to an hour and a half. Congratulations to fourth grade winner Cooper Boyer and Keely St. Clair. And fifth grade winners Elena Foam and Nicholas Michelle. School psychologist Nicole Mitchell and counselors Janelle Kinsley and Jamie Niles are running a staff self-care challenge this school year that has been popular amongst Cumberland Head teachers. Staff have to post on a group Facebook page a picture of how they are practicing self-care. Some teachers post healthy dinners and exercise pictures, et cetera. All that posts are entered to win a monthly drawing. This month's winner won a gift card to Elevate 518 in Plattsburgh. Staff seem to be enjoying this. It's a nice way to relieve stress and focus on the positives. And that is all from me.
Thank you very much, Alexis. That was wonderful. The next is committee reports. The committee that met this month was Policy Committee. Ed, if you could please give us an update on that?
Sure, we covered about six different potential policies. The first one was an anti-bullying revision. It kind of was revised to improve or increase the appeal process for employees at Beaventown. The next three kind of fall in the same category of revision. It was one for textbook selection, adoption, library material selection, and recruiting and hiring. And all of those had suggestions by NISBA for improving, or not really improving, but rewording or adding language to inclusion. And it's something that those, those already have built into them, but there were some small details to be adjusted and you can see those there. There was significant conversation on attendance zones. There was some discussion, you know, this is a, this is a policy that's been amended several times over the course of the years based on, on improving the policy, also adjusting based on giving some leeway to allocate personnel based on our resources. So there was some conversation about it now with the changes of pandemic and so forth. I don't know, Dan, would you like to add anything to this?
No, Ed, I think you did a great job.
Okay, so that's open for discussion with the board at some point. If we want to kind of talk a little bit more, if that needs to be adjusted or changed or modified. I know that we want to make sure that we have some guidelines for that, but also don't want to miss the flexibility to do what's best for kids and priorities. The last one was the temporary digital teaching work regulation. This was put together due to COVID, primarily to enhance the opportunity regulations and administration to ability to improve teachers to work from, from home for certain circumstances due to COVID and the pandemic. This, this policy would expire at the end of June this year. And so that is in discussion currently. That's it. Anybody have any questions on it or discussion?
All right. Thank you for all your hard work. Moving on. May be resolved, it's a superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please? All right, Christopher, you need to take your mic off. They need to be able to hear you.
I move.
Thank you.
I'll second, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. I can hear a family. All right, is there any questions or discussion concerning this resolution?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations dated 1/12/21. May I have a motion, please?
I'll motion, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
I heard Crystal. Okay, Crystal, second. All right, are there any questions or discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent. Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, appointments and retirements be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
That was Mike?
Mark.
Oh, sorry, Mark. May I have a second, please?
But I will second this, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing that there's none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education-
Resolution is, it's a long one.
We have, this one's a roll call?
Oh.
All right, may be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the municipal co- There's nothing worth getting stuck on a word. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the municipal cooperation agreement between the Board of Education of Beaventown Central School District and the Shaysi Union Free School District for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year commencing on 1/4/21 at the amount of $35,000 prorated. May I have a motion, please?
I'll motion, Mike.
Okay, Mike motions. May I have a second?
Crystal, I will second.
All right, any questions or discussion? All right, Joanne, may I please have a roll call vote, please?
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn?
Yes.
Ed Marin?
Yes.
Christopher Micho?
Yeah.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupor?
Yes.
Mark San?
Yes.
Colleen Stone?
Whereas, Section 913 of the educational law empowers the Board of Education to require employees to submit to a medical examination to safeguard the health of children attending public schools. And whereas during the COVID, during the COVID-19 pandemic, school employees may be required to be tested for the coronavirus in order to control the spread of the coronavirus. And whereas-
Do you want to move the list? Is that what, Ed?
Yes.
I will motion to move that.
Thank you so much, Mark.
I'm looking at one that doesn't have that thing there. Hold on. I was looking for that and I don't, I don't see it on this one.
Oh, maybe. All right, thank you very much, Mark, for moving the list.
Huh? Can I make a point of clarification, though? Does this resolution regard, resolve, does it, does it include testing of symptomatic individuals? And/or is this resolution intent to allow for the, the testing at, at the school level based on, like, the, the red zone? Or does it encompass both of those issues? I guess I just want to clarify the intent of this resolution.
Sure, can I, is it appropriate for me to answer that right now?
We should actually do a motion in a second and then discussion. So it's up to you.
But why don't we just do that and then I'll answer that? It's no big deal.
Okay.
So we, you had a, I don't know, where were you?
We've moved the list on the motion. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second, Crystal.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, discussion.
So this is a legal, this is a, based on legal advice that a lawyer did for another district. And there are times when you may want to test your employees, and your employee may need to be tested and you're, you're helping them out. You may find, this is not a situation I'm anticipating, but you could theoretically have a situation where you have somebody sick and they're, they're, you know, anti-COVID and they're not going to be tested. But this does not have to do with, as far as I know, Crystal, the fact that we are unapproved, we, we did receive the, the approval of being a testing site if we do get into a zone where we need to test to be able to come back into, into school. So this is not for that student piece, but it does allow us to test staff for, for a number of reasons. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you for clarifying.
While I'm on the topic, I think it would be great to point out that our public, our medical director, Lori Robinson, has volunteered graciously to jump in and approve anybody to come back, to look at somebody for possible approval to come back to work if in fact they can't- If in fact, they can't, um, find themselves in a doctor's office or find the ability to, to have that approval. So, uh, it's a little off topic, but it's certainly in the same, same direction. So that's nice that our medical director allows, is, is volunteered to do that.
Can I ask one more question before we move on?
Sure.
Um, this resolution is very COVID nineteen pandemic specific.
Yes.
Does that mean that it is a temporary policy?
Uh, this isn't a policy, so this is
For a resolution.
Yeah, um. Well, it's all related to COVID, so let's hope it's temporary, I guess. Um, I guess we have different points of view on that. Section nine thirteen of education law is a law that gives the board the ability to, to do this anyways. This is just kind of giving the ability of the board, if we find ourselves in a ci- excuse me, of the district, if we find ourselves in a situation to just go ahead and test and not worry about having to get the approval later or prior. So you're just kind of getting it out of the way, if in fact, we need it. It is just, it is COVID specific. And yes, Kathy, let's hope it's temporary.
Okay, I, I hope we say temporary. All right, are there any other questions or concerns? Comments? All right, seeing that there's none, all in favor? Aye.
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 No? No? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following policies be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
I will move.
Thank you, Chris. May I have a second?
I'll second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing that there's none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Noes? Thank you. Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda transfers be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. May I have a second?
I'll second, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. May please have a roll call vote, Joanne.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn?
Yes.
Ed Marin?
Yes.
Christopher Micho?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupour?
Yes.
Mark San?
Yes.
Pauline Stone?
Um, our next section is, um, additional items to discuss. Uh, what we have listed is requests for strategic planning proposals. Mister Manix, I do believe in you.
Yes, so goal four is the idea that in your question, two or three of our goals, two and three of our goals, we will engage in a strategic plan. Um, during this year, we kind of set the table. And, uh, I put in the board portal a strategic, um, planning proposal and what we'd look for a vendor to do. And this is an important document because you don't want to be, you don't want to have a, a, a agreement, a contract with a provider to look at the district in certain ways and be sitting here as a board member going, well, why aren't we looking at this over here? So take a look at it and make sure that, uh, our strategic plan is going to be the strategic plan that you, that you want, not that um, you know, not the one that's good, but is missing a couple pieces. So I'm not looking at a vote, I'm not looking for a vote right now on this, but we would like approval. And the goal is call for an approval at some point, um, to put this out and seek a strategic planner. And I did reach out, Ed, to Mark, uh, Davey, because I know they had a person over at Bosse's that they liked. And we have another company that, um, will look at this strategic plan as well. They don't, they don't look at this document until it's approved because I want to make sure that your input is in there. But we have, we have a couple entities that are on deck, so to speak, and knowing that we are going to engage in this process.
All right. All right, the next we need to do, um, a ten or fifteen minute, um, executive session. And it appears that there will be no additional decisions made, um, after we return to executive session. So Mister Manix, are you going to be, um, sending out an additional invite? Okay, so you will be. All right, um. We need to, um, a, approve a clerk pro tem. I am willing to volunteer. So may be resolved that the Board of Education appoint Kathy as clerk pro tem for this meeting. They have a motion, please?
Motion.
That was Mark?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, thank you, Chris. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstains? Resolution passes.
Just make sure you close out of this tab, um, and I will send you one shortly through email.
Right, and then after, we need to come back to this one to close out the meeting?
Kathy? Kathy? We need a motion to go into executive at first before people start closing out.
Okay, is everyone still here?
I'm motion.
We lost Kathy and
I need five people here and I think we've got it. Crystal, you're here?
No, she checked out.
Do we have five? Mark, don't go. We have mine. Hold on. Let's try this way.
We have five.
Are they actually here, though? I'm not hearing any comment and we need to be able to
Doug Beebe's here.
Okay, so that's Nicole's here?
Yep.
All right, that's five. Let's do this resolution and then we can go into executive session. Uh, may be resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session at eight oh two.
Motion, Doug Beebe.
Thank you, Doug.
Nicole, second.
Thank you, Nicole. Questions or discussion?
Kathy, you have to state the reason why you're going in.
Um. I'm gonna go back to my list.
Are you going in for personnel?
Um, I do believe we are going in to discuss um. Hold on, I gotta find it. Proposed pending and current legislation and proposed, oh, sorry. Why can't I find this? And to discuss a particular person or person's history of employment. All right, um, so that's our motion. Doug, our second is Nicole. With, there's no questions or discussion. May we say all in favor, please?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. All right. Thank you, Joanne.
Yep, thank you.
All right, off we go.